All right, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council being held this Monday, September 18th, 2023. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube, and it is close enough to 7:30. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, October 2nd, 2023. Ms. Hamilton, as clerk of council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening, and the agenda will remain as presented. We did have forewarning that both Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Byten dyke would not be here this evening, and as President Pro Tem, I got the joy of filling in for Mr. Byten dyke. So with that, I would ask to stand and join the members of City Council reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023? So moved. Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening there, Mr. Sanders, President Pro Tem. Nice to see you tonight, and council members, nice to have you all here. I'd like to welcome city council members and visitors. I hope you had a chance to visit the Wayne County Fair over the last week. Our thanks to the fair board and the county for putting on one of the state's premier fairs again this year. I think the turnout was strong again, and the weather was pretty nice for most of the events, so we're very blessed to have that feature of our community. I wanted to thank the citizens that made the effort to come to a committee meeting on pickleball and the tennis courts in our city. This is definitely a strong group that is building in Worcester that enjoys this sport, so we are trying to address the need of additional courts. As to addressing that need, the city will be building an additional six new pickleball courts in the lower level of Christmas Run Park. We are planning that these will be constructed yet this year. This wouldn't have been possible without the generous donation of a gift of $50,000 from the Jack and Deb Miller Foundation and the support and encouragement of our city's pickleball enthusiasts. Our thanks to all who helped make this happen. Our agenda for tonight's meeting is pretty straightforward, but has a number of pieces of new business. Our administrative team stands ready to advise and explain any questions that council members might have with tonight's business. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andre Dordia, our finance director, to fill you in on a nice honor for our city also. Andre?
Sure, Mayor. So, as you may know, we're the fiscal agent of the city for the Worcester Growth Corporation, which is our community proven corporation. So we do all the books and financial statements for Worcester Growth. I received a nice email from the Otter State and said that I'm reaching out to you because Worcester Growth Corporation is a 2022 recipient of the Otter State Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting in accordance with Generally Accepted Accounting Procedures. So I thought, good idea, Bob, I'd be glad to share that with the group. Hopefully, with any luck, we'll get the same award for the city's financial statements. But I'd also say, early on in life, I learned you hire good people and get the hell out of the way, good things can happen, and it proves point.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And with that, President Pro Tem Sanders, turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Petitions, communications from public, we have none. And we do have a request for a liquor control, which Ms. Hamilton will read here momentarily.
So we received a notice from the Liquor Control Agency that Leroy's of Worcester Inc. has changed their name to Leroy's Place Inc., and they're asking to transfer their liquor license to their new name.
And with that, we have three options. One to request a hearing in our county seat, one to request a hearing in Columbus, or one to not request a hearing. With that, I would take a motion from council as to which they would prefer to have. Motion to waive hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan. He lives closer.
Right, it's in his ward.
Hey, John, do we need to do a roll call?
Oh, for that?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay. We'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right. So we will not have a hearing, and good luck to them with their, well, I guess they're just changing the name, but good luck anyways. Next item on the agenda is our committee reports. We did have a public hearing committee this evening, and with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mayor Brenneman, thank you. You did an excellent job of recapping the committee meeting and the things that we covered the city had put forth. I think some very great solutions that seems to be to the satisfaction of everyone who came to the meeting. The only thing that you didn't mention, and I'll add to that, is also this fall, we'll be resurfacing, repairing cracks and resurfacing the current pickleball courts up off of Woodland, and then probably in the spring, we'll have money budgeted and we'll be seeking contractors to repair and resurface the tennis courts down at Christmas Run. So we will be repairing and upgrading those facilities, as well as the new courts that you had mentioned. I want to just thank the people that came for the meeting and shared their thoughts, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Okay. It went right by me. All right, sorry about that. All right, well, we'll move on to unfinished business, which at this point is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-22, which I will leave to Ms. Hamilton.
Ordinance number 2023-22, an ordinance amending Chapter 160, bidding procedures and contract requirements of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, by increasing the amount of the limit for competitive bidding.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. This is actually my piece of legislation, and like I say, this will be our second reading on this. And probably I'll be doing something slightly different than Mr. Byten dyke, but I would like to open the floor up to some conversation about thoughts regarding this. Basically, what it boils down to is the state is suggesting that we go from a $50,000 to a $75,000 threshold, where we would normally, anything less than that, we would not specifically see a piece of legislation related to that purchase. And then on top of that, the recommendation is a 3% increase automatically effective January of the first of each year, beginning in 2025. And so we didn't have a whole lot of conversation about it last time, and at this point, like you say, I would like to open the floor up to any council members that might have some thoughts on this. Mr. Myers?
I understand the state's doing this for their budget. Their budget's quite a bit bigger than the city of Worcester's budget, and I think that probably this helps with some streamlining of paperwork for a budget that's as large as the state of Ohio. I don't see any reason that a $50,000, anything over $50,000 couldn't go through competitive bid procedures. There are plenty of opportunities, and we do it regularly, where we single-source vendors for particular reasons, due to relationships, contracts, past business practices, or consistency with current systems or other work we've done. So we have a number of those every year where we don't have a bid for certain reasons, but I don't see any reason to raise the threshold. Our budget's not so large that there are that many of them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Is there anyone else? Ms. Knappich?
Thanks. Down here all by myself, so. I did shower, and I did breath before the meeting, so. How long has it been at $50,000? How many years?
I didn't look that up, but the last time that we updated ours to comply was within the last 10 years? Within the last 10 years, and what we did at that time was simply copy what the state did.
Okay.
And just for clarification, so what the state has already done, when they passed the budget, is they changed the higher revised code that applies to all townships, counties, statutory cities, small cities, and some large but smaller cities. So right now, every township, every county, that's not a charter county, there's a couple of them in Ohio, every statutory city currently does not have to bid anything unless it's over $75,000. So the law applies to all of those, and that's why they changed it, was so that all of those entities could basically adjust to inflation since the last 10 years. So we're a charter city, so if we want to adopt that, we have to actually conform our legislation to the state.
And they didn't have a, for lack of a better term, a cost of living increase in the last one, did they?
They did not.
That bothers me, quite frankly. That's just, I'd love to have a job where somebody would say, okay, from here till eternity, you get 3% on top of everything you get now. But I'm not really comfortable with doing that, not knowing what the economy is going to be down the road, not knowing where the city finances are going to be down the road. Just doing a blanket 3% increase into infinity, I'm not comfortable with that at all. And I have to say with Scott, too, I'm not sure, is there anything that we bid that isn't budgeted that is that much over $75,000? I mean, I think we budget everything pretty, Andre does a great job, the departments do a great job of, I mean, one of the things I think is good about the city is we know what expenses are coming up.
Yeah, so we budget everything, and then when you look in the budget, you know, I make all of the managers do a five-year equipment budget, that's where the things that would be in that range. So you see everything that's really over $10,000, you know, any equipment, you see that in their five-year equipment budget, in the budget that's submitted every year. So you already see a list of all the things that might have been under 50, but say over $10,000 that we wouldn't bid, but we would get quotes for, we're required to get at least three quotes. We just, it just streamlined the process on some things like that. So really, it was an inflation adjustment, because they haven't done it in 10 years or so. That was one thing we could do, is just strike the 3% would be one option, and then just see how it goes, and if we thought in five or 10 years we needed to increase something, we could come back to council and ask, you know.
If we don't pass this this evening, there's no reason, I mean, currently, everything's been running fine. We're not overwhelmed with paperwork, we're not overwhelmed with ordinances and things to pass, it seems to be working with the $50,000 limit. There's no reason, though, if we can't say in two years, you know, this is getting really cumbersome, and it's bogging down our engineering department, or our PPM department, or it's bogging, you know, it's becoming cumbersome, we could always enact this later.
You could. They've already been asking me, they have some things they're thinking about, Kurt has a few things that we could, some of the things might be, you know, a large pump or a large piece of equipment at a lift station, or the kind of things that tend to get in that range. I think we had one pump recently, it was like $30,000. So you can easily get up to some of those, and to turn around quickly, make that purchase, you know, without having to wait, you know, two weeks, depending on when it falls in between a council meeting, it's just nice to have that flexibility. But there's not a lot.
Yeah, I don't recall many instances where the city's come back to us to, recently we did, but it has come back to us and asked for authorization for something over $50,000. So I don't know that it would be that often that you'd come back to us and ask for authorization for something over 75.
Yeah, I mean, we do request authorization to bid anything over $50,000 right now.
Right.
Sometimes there's vendors, you know, that we have that maybe PPM's using, and maybe, you know, utilities is using, and if we get to the point where it's a similar service, and that's going to exceed 50, we'll come back to council to say.
And we just waive the bid requirement. We just waive the bid requirement.
Yeah, in those cases, because we're already using them, it was a, right.
Yeah, but what I meant was that most of those, or almost all of those are budgeted.
Everything.
Yeah, everything is budgeted, so we know what's coming up. Okay.
All right, well, I appreciate the, was there anyone else that had any comments they wanted to make? No? All right, well, I appreciate the conversation, and we'll unders, at this point, ordinance 2023-22 is, we'll just leave it on second reading and move on. All right, that's the last of the unfinished business. Now we're moving on to new business. Ms. Hamilton, if you'd read Resolution 2023-48, please.
Resolution number 2023-48, a resolution accepting a donation for the construction of pickleball courts, authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of pickleball courts, appropriating the donated funds, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Myers, I'm sorry, Mr. Myers?
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, we've already basically covered this topic at the committee meeting last week, and then the mayor's comments. I just want to certainly thank Jack and Deb Miller and their foundation for their very generous, almost instantaneous, like, one day we're thinking, man, we could use some money to build some more tennis courts, I think it was like the next day, they stepped forward and said, yeah, we'll do that. And they just stepped up and made a $50,000 donation to the city. So this resolution, of course, will authorize us to accept that and put it towards the construction of the courts that we had discussed earlier. So is there any questions from council? I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Knappich. Oh, yes, you have to suspend the rules.
Do we need to suspend the rules for this?
Yes.
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to suspend rules and a second. If you would call the roll, Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Now, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, please.
And I'll second.
Ms. Knappich, seconds again. Please read the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the second item, Resolution 2023-49.
Resolution number 2023-49, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, to accept and apply such funds if awarded, and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Ms. Warden, just a reminder, this is a three-reading piece of legislation, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. So this resolution is an opportunity to authorize the administration to apply for and accept a grant and/or loan funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to line the city's sanitary sewers in 2024. Over time, the lining will reduce the city's operating costs by limiting infiltration and inflow into the city's sanitary sewer system. The estimated cost for the work is about $700,000, and if the resolution passes, OPWC funding would cover up to $500,000 of that cost. And this evening, I'd like to welcome John Rice. He is the new city engineer, and he's here, and he can answer any questions anybody might have for the next several pieces of legislation that I'll be introducing tonight. But yeah, I just wanted to say, as the infrastructure chair here in the city, I look forward to working with you to keep the city running smoothly. Does anybody have any questions for John about this particular piece of legislation?
I'm just curious, how many feet are we doing?
Yeah, it's pretty substantial for the lining.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want everybody to think we were doing the entire city system for this.
Like, mile and a half or two miles, and we have, what, it's like 150 miles of sanitary sewers, so. It's a fraction, but we're looking at some of the worst areas.
It's a huge percentage.
Areas that have old clay sewers, that don't have gasketed joints, that have tree root problems, so, yeah, we'll take care of a lot of the bad ones with this project.
Very good.
Thank you. So in order to give the administration enough time to meet their application deadlines, I would like to place this resolution on third and final reading this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconded. Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right, the resolution has passed, thank you. We'll move on to the third item, Resolution 2023-50.
Resolution number 2023-50, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for systematic sign replacements along U.S. Route 30 within the city of Worcester, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Well, thank you. Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. So the state of Ohio has decided that it wants to replace the signs that are located along Route 30 next summer, and a portion of the affected area lies between the city's east and west corporation limits. So as a formality, the city has to give consent to the Director of Transportation to make these changes. There's no cost to the city in order to do this, unless, of course, we request any additional construction items, but I spoke with Mr. Rice earlier today, and he said that's very unlikely to occur. The city will continue to be responsible for maintaining the right of way and the signage that's involved in this project. Should any city-owned utilities need to be relocated during the project, ODOT will reimburse the city for that relocation work. The resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in order to expedite the project and thus promote more safe highways, so I would like to make a motion to adopt.
You'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
I thought we didn't have to, if they said that it's an emergency in the.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll do that.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ansel? Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt?
You do, I move to adopt.
Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan? Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, new signs, that's exciting.
No cost is more exciting.
Right, but do we get to decide what's set on?
I'll take the old signs.
Worcester the best city in the world.
That one's extra.
All right, our fourth item, Resolution 2023-51, if you would read that, Ms. Hamilton, please.
Resolution number 2023-51, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for construction services for the downtown streetscape Phase Four, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you. Ms. Warden, floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a request to authorize advertisement for bids and to enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder to carry out Phase Four of the city's streetscape project. The location of Phase Four includes from West Liberty Street at the PNC Bank driveway to Walnut Street, and from the south side of Liberty Street along the east side of South Walnut Street to the first alley. So to picture it, I'm down in that area pretty often, so it's from PNC driveway over to Matzo's and then down to the alley just before local routes. And having said that I've been down in that area pretty frequently, I can see that the sidewalks are in desperate need of some improvement, so I'm excited that this is going to be happening. I think it's going to save the pedestrians down there a lot of stubbed toes and maybe banged-up ankles, so it'll be a really, it's a much-needed improvement. Costs for the project are expected to be about $350,000, and $302,240 of this will be paid out of the city's capital funds, with the remaining $47,760 paid through assessments to the affected property owners. And property owners in the area will be assessed according to the city's current rate. I asked Mr. Rice to pull that rate, just so if anybody's watching from home and curious as to what they might be responsible for.
For this project, the estimated assessment rate is $270.83.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Rice about the street? We're pretty familiar with this, especially being that it's Phase Four, but he is here to answer any questions.
What is the timeline for project commencement?
It will be a project that will be done next year.
Spring of next year.
We planned to bid this year, get contacted, and then get construction.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or not, Mr. Rice. Why are we not, why are we stopping at the alley in the middle of the block? Why don't we continue on down to South Street? I mean, we have a lot of other kind of things going on down there with Wayne Center for the Arts, and we're going to have local routes moving to the South Street location. It seems kind of in the library, the library streetscape and their side, what goes clear to South Street. It seems odd that we'd stop in the middle.
Right, and actually, along Walnut Street, that's an old brick sidewalk, that's in real bad shape, that needs to be done. So logically, it makes sense to turn the corner, go down at least that far. And I know with the comprehensive plan that we are working on right now, we're looking at that kind of arts district, it's more of a focus area, so I think that could be in a future phase, and like you say, there are some moving parts down there that I think once those fall into place, it'll give a little better idea of what makes sense to do down there relative to the streetscape and any other improvements that may need to be made.
All right, do you have a motion for us, Ms. Warden?
I do. I would like to make a motion to adopt. This is a budgeted item, I believe, sorry.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan? Ms. Hamilton, if you call the roll.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Let's see, that doesn't.
Five points.
It's approved.
Yeah, that's right, we're on third, so yeah, at this point, okay. Yeah, it's adopted. All right.
Super majority. Well, that's purely an act, so we'll take it.
Copy.
Give them time to consider going to South Street.
Okay.
Unless we change that up due to the comprehensive plan.
All right, well, we'll move on to item five, Resolution 2023-52, and Ms. Hamilton, if you'll introduce this, please, or read the legislation.
Resolution number 2023-52, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of curb ramps and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you. Wow, this is another Ms. Warden...
You're gonna be sick of me by the end of the night? All right, so ODOT is requesting that the city replace the curb ramps along Oak Hill Road between West Liberty and Wayne Avenue in order for the city to be eligible to receive ODOT's large cities funds to pave that portion, that portion of Oak Hill Road next year. The resolution is simply a request to authorize the advertisement for bids and to enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder to replace the curb ramps. The estimated cost is $125,000, and this is a budgeted item. These new curb ramps will meet all ADA requirements. And I don't believe there's anything that needs to be discussed, but would anybody like to ask any questions about this? It's pretty straightforward. Seeing nothing, I would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
All right, Ms. Warden, motions to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan seconds. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
I have a question. The legislation states that suspension of the rules is necessary, so I'm just curious why the legislation states that it is and we decided not to.
Is the legislation set up?
Um, on page, the page shift of the ordinance under engineering. At the bottom, is there a need for suspension of the rules or a timeframe when this must be approved? And it says yes.
Mr. Byten dyke taught me that that's never very accurate, so you're always supposed to look at the bottom of the legislation.
The way that you know, I understand that. The way that you know if it needs to have the rule suspended or not is if it's budgeted or if it's, if it's budgeted or if it's ceremonial only, then you don't have to suspend the rules. If, in this case, this is budgeted, so there's no need to suspend the rules regardless of what it says.
So it'll have to wait 30 days.
Well, if...
That's what the charter says.
You're talking about for immediate enactment?
Yeah.
If you, if you pass it with immediate enactment, then you don't have to wait 30 days. If you do, then you, if you don't, then you do. So that's, that's how that works.
So you just need to teach the people that write this paperwork that that's the rule so that the box is checked correctly?
Well...
I'm sure you never make a type of...
We put that in legislation, if it passes with enough votes, then it will be immediately passed, and if not, it'll take 30 days.
Good.
Okay. Item number six is Resolution 2023-53, which again will be presented by Ms. Warden. Ms. Hamilton, if you could read the legislation, please?
Resolution number 2023-53. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase and installation of traffic signals and related equipment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you, my final piece. So in keeping with tonight's theme of infrastructure improvements, the resolution at hand authorizes the city to seek bids and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder to replace the traffic signals at the intersections of Quimby Avenue and Bowman Street and also at Quimby and Wayne Avenues. These traffic signals have been identified as being either near or at the, the end of their useful life. So cost for this project has been estimated at $417,000, and this amount is budgeted. And at a cost of just over $50,000, I just thought this was interesting, that a, a cost of just over $50,000 for each light, so at each corner of each intersection, it really highlights some of the cost-saving benefits of roundabouts. Not that I'm proposing roundabouts in the center of town, but...
I was thinking the same.
Just saying.
But you know, they're low maintenance as, as well, so anyways, I, again, this is budgeted, so I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll?
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-53 has been approved. Next resolution, 2023-54. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read it, please?
Resolution number 2023-54. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Francis Butcher for the purchase of real estate appropriating the necessary funds and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. As we've seen over the last few years, as our city administration campus grows and consequently Fire Station 1, the administration has spent time with the adjacent property owners trying to work into some type of future purchases when those people are ready to, you know, sell those properties. In this particular case, the property piece would be to our, directly behind us, to the west. It's a two-story house built in the 30s. The advantage of this is, is that it's also directly adjacent to the public alley that runs between our parking lot, between here and Fire Station 1, and going, going back to Walnut Street. So it's, it's, it's a, it provides us with a possibility of adding on to our future parking lot, which currently is to our west. And with that, I will let Mr. Malley, if he has any additional comments on this, to share his thoughts.
Thank you very much. We actually began conversations with, with our neighbor here a few years ago. And at, at this time, they decided that they needed to locate to an apartment because of certain situations that they're facing. And so that being the case, they, they have secured an opportunity to do that. And rather than list it, traditionally, they, they approached us. We ran some comparables, and we went back and forth a bit. And also, they needed to, to cover their, their existing mortgage. And so that being the case, we, we arrived to a price point that we believe the home would sell for on the fair market. So that gets us a fair market opportunity to acquire the property, would assist our, our neighbor of 30-plus years of being able to, to move to their apartment. And as, as we were talking, and, and as this developed, they have asked us to have a consideration here for the 18th, as they would like to be able to move forward and close so that they can do their moving this, this October. So you do see in here a provision that, you know, the ability to have a lease, that would be to provide them the, the closing so that they can secure their, their spot and, and do their, their moving over the month of October. But we would anticipate having full possession by the, the end of October at this point.
Okay. Is there any questions from any council members?
Just real quick, what do you anticipate the closing cost to be?
I would anticipate them to be five grand or less. So we have, uh, asking for the appropriated amount of 140,000. So that covers 135 acquisition costs plus whatever closing title expenses that we would run into. And we're using a Leane County title for that service at our election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley.
I have a question, if I could...
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Warden.
Mr. Malley, it, it's mentioned in the description of the legislation that it, there's no set future use for this just yet. Potentially parking or maybe leasing it to a social service partner. Is the, is the home in good enough condition as it stands to be useful to a social service or a, yeah, social service partner?
I believe so. Otherwise, my home may not qualify that, that I live in. I, I have had...
But they don't have toddlers living there, right?
And I, I do, I do. So I, I would say that this home is much more peaceful. But that's, I, I have been through the house up and down here, here in the past, and I've, I've been in very recently again. I think that it's in decent shape.
Okay.
The nice thing about partnering with the social service agency, we've previously worked with 180. They, they also provide us some ability to be able to have us not only maintain the property, and so that, that relieves us of some costs.
Sure.
We can also receive some additional support, some, some rent to help cover that. So very quickly, by taking it on, we would not incur any additional costs and might, might have some savings over time on it until we would be ready to demolish it.
Sure.
But if there's not a need to demolish it right away, our, our thought is, well, we can input it back into the community.
I like that idea. I feel like that would be useful on, to a number of people versus just sitting there as a vacant lot, because I'm sure there, there would be hope to have a larger lot than just one house.
Correct, and it would be a single family.
Right, right.
I, I...
I've heard we need housing. Somebody said that.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I've heard we need some more, I've heard we need housing in the city.
Oh, yes.
Somebody said that, so...
I may have said that a few times.
Yeah.
But I, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malley. With that, I will motion to suspend, suspend the rules of council and place resolution 2023-54 on third and final reading.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Myers, second. Ms. Hamilton, if you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I would motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Myers, seconds.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry about the interruption there. All right. Next item, Resolution 2023-55. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, if you would, please read the resolution?
Resolution number 2023-55. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the estate of Savoy Bird for the purchase of real estate appropriating the necessary funds and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. What we have here is an additional piece of property on North Street that is between three different pieces that we already, the city already owns that we've been utilizing as, as part for parking. And again, the city had been spending some time in long-range discussion with the, the property owner for this, and it's a great opportunity for us because it gives us additional ability. I see that there's parking to the south. Is there, are tho, both those houses still there, Mr. Malley, that's on the map?
Yes, sir. The, um, house that we see on, to the west, we have possession of that as of December 31st at the end of this year. So that is being vacated at the, at the moment.
Oh, okay.
So that'll be slated for demolition. The subject property itself is in extremely poor condition, and we don't believe suitable for habitation, so our intent here would be to try to have a cost savings and demolish both at the same time if this were to pass.
All right, very good. Uh, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place resolution 2023-55 on third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Knappich? Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll, please?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right. With that, I would motion to adopt Resolution 2023-55. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cavan, seconds. Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 2023-55 passes. Did you have a question, Mr. Myers?
I just had a question, Mr. Malley, on the potential, there's, I know it's not part of the legislation, so I wanted to wait. There's a potential, potential connection line on my document. Why is it going through two buildings instead of the alley right next door?
That is due to a PDF offset error.
Gotcha. All right. I, I never known you'd make any kind of like a, even small error like that. Okay. Very good, thank you.
All right. Next resolution piece will be introduced by a new player in the game, Mr. Ansel. Ms. Hamilton, if you'd please read Resolution 2023-56.
Resolution number 2023-56. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for improvements to the headworks portion of the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as we're all aware, this project was initially presented in 2022 and included in our infrastructure strategic plan. It is included in our 2023 budget, and council had previously authorized design contracts and application for the OPWC funds in September of last year. So this isn't anything new to us. We have Mr. Fritz here this evening if there should be any technical questions. But this is a sizable expenditure of which, about $5,492,000 is budgeted. But again, it's been in the planning and discussion stages for the last couple of years. Why? Because it's replacing a variety of equipment, which are highlighted in the description summary. I'd be glad to repeat those, but they're identified, influent pumps, additional pumps with horsepower references noted, influent screening structure, a new grit structure built between the screening building and the influent pumping well, et cetera, et cetera. It's a significant upgrade and perhaps long overdue. The equipment itself, the original equipment, the pumps and the valving and the containment units are, range from 26 to 20 years old. But even more impressive is the structural elements and components of the system, which dates back more than 85 years. So we've certainly got tremendous functionality out of those initial designs and equipment replacements. So we do have the funds available. $4 million will be funded via bonds and 760,000 through the Department of Development grant, and $500,000 from the OPWC fund. So this will allow the wastewater team to go out and solicit, we have the designs and things complete, but it will allow competitive bidding and a contract to be awarded, so this can commence early next year. So again, we're all aware of this impending upgrade, very, very important, and hopefully we'll get another 50 to 85 years out of this investment, which makes the $5.4 million seem more palatable over that period of time. So thank you. If you have any technical questions, Mr. Fritz will be more than happy to answer those. I'm just the commentator of this piece of legislation. The technical elements are far beyond my bandwidth, but if there aren't any questions, being this is a budgeted item, and we're all aware of the required upgrade, I would motion to suspend the rules and move for adoption of Resolution 2023-56.
Okay, Mr. Ansel has moved to adopt Resolution 2023-56. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Warden? Is there any discussion or questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Fritz, what is the, I know Mr. Ansel said, you know, in an ideal scenario, we'd have 75, 80 years out of, you know, obviously not each piece of equipment, but what is the expected useful life of, you know, the bulk of this? Is, are we looking at another 20 years, perhaps?
For all the mechanical equipment?
Yes, okay.
Pumps, screens, those kinds of things are, looked at like 20 years.
Okay.
Concrete and, you know, channels and plumes and those kinds of things, you know, we're getting close to 100 years out of those. So yeah, it just depends on the type of equipment, but yeah, we, we would hope we'd get 20 years out of pretty much all the mechanical equipment.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right, well, with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you'd call the roll to adopt?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right. Motion to adopt, our resolution has been adopted. Last item on the agenda, Resolution 2023-57. Again, will be done by Mr. Ansel. But first, we'll have Ms. Hamilton do her thing.
Resolution number 2023-57. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with Jones and Henry for design and consulting services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours?
Yes, this again is a budgeted item, and Jones and Henry have the working knowledge and understanding of our UV ultraviolet disinfecting operations at our water processing facility and have designed and recommended and will be our sole source because of their intimate knowledge and long-term understanding of the operation. But the plan was completed and by Veridantis, we're familiar with them, and the work will be with Jones and Henry, and it really just is updating our UV treatment system through an open trough UB operation. It's part of our 10-year infrastructure, infrastructure strategic plan. It is included in our 2023 budget. Construction will commence in 2024 for a total estimated cost of 139,540. So again, this will be a sole source because of their intimate working knowledge of the operation, and while timing isn't significant here, since we all are aware of the process and the upgrade, I will motion to suspend the rules of council and move to third and final reading this evening.
All right, so we have a motion to approve 2023-57. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
All right. Resolution has been approved.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we move into our miscellaneous. We didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not have anyone sign up on the miscellaneous from the public, did we?
No, we did not.
All right. Well, we'll start with our council comments. I guess we'll just start to my right, so Mr. Cavan?
No additional comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warden?
I just would like to bring up that during the Public Health and Leisure Committee meeting earlier this evening, Mr. Gooch spoke about the potential for changing Halloween to a citywide date versus a, you know, individual neighborhoods. And I know in my time on council, I've received, usually about every year, about this time of year, I get phone calls or emails or, you know, some sort of correspondence from the, the community about this. So I guess I would just encourage the public, if anyone's out there listening, to please reach out to your council members or to call the administration, and I'm sure they would love to hear your opinion on the matter. And, but no, it's helpful to hear everybody weigh in. I, I don't have children, so it's, it's not really a point that sticks with me, but it's nice to hear what people who do deal with those things, I don't mean those things like children, but who deal with Halloween and trick or treat.
Well, you do have to hear them sometimes.
You know, who deal with, with, with children parties and things like that, that would be useful, useful background to get, to make a decision about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ansel?
Big game tonight, Browns and Steelers, go Browns.
Go Browns.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I, I know I've already done it, but I want, want to say one more time, thanks to Jack and Deb Miller Foundation for their extremely timely and much appreciated donation towards our pickleball courts in the city of Worcester. Also, I agree with Mr. Gooch, it seems that designating a citywide time for the Saturday prior, which would be the 28th, would make a lot of sense for the safety of our children. So I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Scavelli about a resolution for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Knappich?
Thank you. On that topic of Halloween, very quickly, if I could ask Chief Fisher to weigh in, do you have a preference, neighborhoods or which is, which is better for the police department, basically? Is it easier to, to patrol, trick or treat, all in one date, or hit or miss?
It's easier all in one day. We know the date and the time, we can actually schedule extra officers to come in and patrol neighborhoods and do some of that, so from a, a police perspective, it's...
Excellent, thank you, that's very helpful. Just like to say that we're glad to have John Rice on board as our city engineer. I also like to say thanks to the Jack and Deb Miller Foundation, that was incredibly